We will call the regular session to order, and we have previously been in closed session. I will ask our city attorney to report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The city council is in closed session this evening. Conference of legal counsel discussing litigation. And I provided the council with an update on those matters that are listed on the agenda. There was no reportable action under public employee performance evaluation. City manager, there's also no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. Before we have the roll call, I would like to say that this council acknowledges the Community of Character pledge, which are character traits that we try to observe and live by. After that, I would ask for the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Powers? Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
We'll have a moment of silent prayer, and then I will ask councilmember Shelton to lead us in the light salute.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) of the United States of America and into the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He would need the video statement at this time?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West cable systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
At this time, I would ask the council if there's any additions or deletions from the agenda? Turn for me.
I have a comment. Were we going to move up the appointments council is making? Or do you think we'll get that done in a timely manner? I see quite a few people from the audience, I think, that have their letters in.
I think, didn't somebody have to make the ask? Are you asking everybody?
You know, it's the pleasure of the council if you want to move it up.
We can move it up after consent? Pardon me? After consent?
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we're going to move that up, then I have one item, which was undermined, which is city council. That is number two, which is the committee commission bylaws and guidelines. Either have a comment, or I would like to have that discussed before we make the appointments.
Before the appointment?
Yes.
And that is, um, G2?
Yeah, yeah. With concurrence of council.
Is that meeting that we're going to approve of?
Sure.
Anything else? Any other additions? Is there, um...
Pardon? Move to accept the consent calendar?
Is there a second?
A second.
We need a roll call vote?
I'm sorry, I think we just skipped presentations and public comments.
Oh, sorry. Okay. But we're back up here. Um, at this time, we will have presentations, and Jim Miller and group has met us at the podium.
My name is Kayla Coles. I am a youth ambassador for Emerge. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. Remember me? I told you I'd be coming back. I would like to give you a follow-up on the American Promise Award. Founded in 1997, America's Promise Award alliance is the nation's largest partnership organization dedicated to improving the lives of children and youth. With nearly 400 partners representing all sectors of American society, the alliance raises awareness, supports communities, and engages in nonpartisan advocacy around key issues impacting the lives of young people. These key issues ensure that all youth receive more of the fundamental resources they need to graduate high school, prepare for college, work, and life. Building on the legacy of this founding chairman, General Colin Powell, the alliance believes the success of our young people is grounded on the five promises: caring adults, safe places, a healthy start, an effective education, and opportunities to help others. Sacramento was able to apply for 100 Best Communities for a youth competition just by filling out a form. By doing so, it brought many committed members of the community together to receive and solve problems regarding resources for our youth. Winners were selected by a very thorough process. All applications were reviewed by a distinguished panel of civic, business, and nonprofit leaders. These judges look for innovative or proven programs and initiatives that demonstrate applicant communities are actively working to increase graduation rates. Winning communities had to demonstrate how they are collaborating across sectors such as schools, nonprofits, businesses, and faith communities working together to help the youth people in cities and towns overcome challenges and achieve their potential. The Sacramento region was rewarded as one of the 100 Best Communities because we have community leaders, educators, faith leaders, and neighbors working together to ensure our young people graduate and are ready for adulthood. We know that being named 100 Best doesn't mean we're perfect, but it shows our collective commitment to Sacramento area youth, supporting them to stay in school and providing the resources they need to succeed. I'm here tonight to thank you for your participation and information that has helped us, the Emerge team, get this award for the Sacramento County. Currently, our youth action team is working on two advocacy initiatives: safe places and transportation. Specifically in Galt, the Emerge action team is targeting transportation in South Sacramento, Elk Grove, and Galt. Through our research and investigation in regards to Galt, there are some safe places, but there is no way for these youth to travel to or from those places, and more safe places are needed. Currently, our project manager is meeting up with CICOG to discuss transportation alternatives for youth to get to and from these safe places. We'll be coming back in the near future with our results on this matter. There's the acknowledgement of being one of the best cities in the nation, but there is always room for Galt to do more. Now, I would like to introduce to you a member of the leadership team and president of the Consumerness Community Services Board, Michelle O'Rourke, who will further discuss the matters of this.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us tonight. It's good to see all of you again. I wanted to say a special thanks to Mayor Payne. He actually came to our event back in October and presented an award to, I think, one of the organizations from Galt. I forget which one it was. But we really appreciate your support. This award is really a testimony to what all the cities in Sacramento can do when they work together. The collaboration with Sacramento County is kind of the overarching agency with all the cities, including Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, Folsom, Rancho Cordova, and the city of Sacramento. So we're really, really excited about this. We're hoping to be able to come back next year with the same good news. I think this is your two for this? Yeah. So hopefully come back next year with another award for you guys. But without further ado, I'd like to introduce Jim Miller, project manager with Emerge.
Thank you. The interesting thing about this award is unlike it has been the prior two years that Sacramento County has received it, you've probably heard about it, but no one's been up here giving you the actual award, I'm sure. This year, what Emerge did, and what our purpose was of Emerge, was uniting SAC County, the cities, the governments, and all the school districts to come together as one, you know, versus being separate. Not to say that that's a bad or good thing, but in sometimes regards to youth, having a regional effect is much better than having just, if you will, just a singular event with one company or one organization or one city. When we approached the Sacramento County, what I asked them is, this year, could we do something different? If we weren't able to receive this award, could we award it to the cities individually? Because let's face it, SAC County is SAC County, and I'm not faulting them at all, but who does all the work? The cities do the work within the county. They have the school districts, obviously. They have the boys and girls clubs, or their teen centers, or whatever, or the Boy Scouts, or whatever. They're all citywide. So with it, they said, well, go ahead, thinking that probably wouldn't get very far. So, but thank you, the city of Galt, and to your school district, because they worked with us, along with Rancho, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove. And we approached America's Promise organization through Colin Powell, who had been out here prior year to speak with us, to speak for us, for our committee. He thought the idea was tremendous, not only that the city of Sacramento, or city county of Sacramento, received the award, but that the individual cities received the full acknowledgement of this award, because, again, they're the ones that are actually doing the work. So with that, this is the first year in the history of the America's Promise, this 1996, that they have allowed one city or county, if you will, Sacramento County, to share this award individually with each city. So I am here tonight to present to you, with my crew here, the plaque, which will go inward. It's supposed to be a street sign, but it's not very sturdy, so they had a rough year for budget. Anyway, a couple people laminated. This is something you can proudly hang here at the city hall, outside, whatever. Some people, in fact, I think Citrus Heights was thinking about sticking it outside as you come into the city of Citrus Heights, saying, hey, we're the 100 Best. Look. And so this is your award, which is a very meaningful thing, not just the placate itself, but from a national standpoint, you will be receiving very soon, the, if you will, the, I guess it's called the computer version of this, that can go on all your grants. Because when you apply for grants in regards to your police department or youth, having this on there, this symbol that you are the best 100, will hopefully get your grant read. I'm not sure you're going to receive any money, but it might put you to the top of the pile. Every little bit helps, especially today with grants as they are, specifically with your PD, okay, with your police department, and if you ever decide to go for a pal, it helps tremendously. So with that, I'd like to give you this award, and we want to thank you from Emerge. And yes, we will be back. We're looking for funding, but we will be back, because safe places and transportation are two of the major things facing our youth today. Dropout rates, of course, but I think if we can solve just those two issues, the rest should take care of itself with the great school district we have within our Sacramento County region. So thank you, and this is yours. If I can get a picture or...
No, I'm good. I have a box. I don't have a box.
(inaudible).
What a cool thing.
One, two, three. Just take one more of them. You've got a sense stick camera. One, two, three, go.
Didn't flash.
I just want to say, I always knew we were one of the best 100 cities, but it's nice that you came and acknowledged it. And we will find the proper place for this, and we will display it proudly. Before you leave, I would also like to mention that we are having an unmet transit need meeting on January the 25th. So if you want to have some representation for the youth, it'll be in the committee room. All right, great. And to further demonstrate how wonderful our youths are in Galt, I would like for Deborah Crane and whomever she brought along with her to come up to the podium.
I only see her moving. I don't see the others moving, but they're...
Well, this woman is amazing, and we have a certificate for her, but it's just a certificate. What she's got back at Galt High School is truly amazing, and maybe I will let her talk about it a little bit, and then I'll issue the certificate. So if you'd like to talk about what you've got at Galt High School, as well as the biomedical part, if you could.
Hi. I'm Deborah Crane, and I'm a teacher at Galt High School, and I wanted to talk to you about our engineering program and our new engineering lab and our new academy that we have there, and what it means to Galt and what we need from Galt, too. In 2000, 2001, we started the engineering, Project Lead the Way Engineering Program at Galt High School. We started it in one classroom. It's a four-year program. We now offer, we have six different classes that students can take there, with the, all based in engineering. They all have a different focus, trying to get students interested in different aspects of engineering, so that when they go to college, they'd be more successful in the field of engineering. We were, we became a certified site in 2003. We're one of only 11 certified sites in the state of California. We were one of the first. By being a certified site, that means that the students at Galt High School can take our classes and receive college credit for the courses. So it's a very good designation for us to have. It's a very important designation. Because we're certified, and one of the only certified was in Northern California, we've become sort of a magnet for other schools who are considering starting an engineering program. We've had schools, people from NAPA, we've had people from the greater Sacramento region. Last year, we had about 50 people from Contra Costa, Chevron, come down and tour our program. We've got a very well-respected program. It was a very good reputation in the area. We've had, this last year in February, we applied and were accepted into the National Academy Foundation and as an academy of engineering. So we'll be one of eight academy of engineering's in the state of California. Within our academy of engineering, we not only have engineering, but we started in, this fall, we started biomedical. Project Lead the Way started a strand with biomedical science in order to prepare students for careers in the medical field and to be successful in college in biomedical. So our academy is called BEST Academy, Biomedical Engineering Science and Technology. And so if you see BEST Academy, you'll know that's what they're talking about. And so we've started that. We've done a lot of activities. Some of you have been to them. On December 4th, we had the ribbon cutting for our brand-new engineering facility. We were able to get a CTE grant and, let's see, we started, it's about four years ago working on this grant, and the money finally came through, and we were able to finish a lab. We took four classrooms and gutted them, turned them into a giant engineering room, and it was got all kinds of equipment. We've got a laser engraver, 3D printer, a printer that the students draw something on the computer, and it prints the actual item in plastic. We have, we have, we have a metal shop area, we have a wood shop area, we have two CNC machines, so we have all kinds of, all kinds of fun stuff. Plus, we have the computer lab, and we have another lecture room that hopefully will become a computer lab. We used your City of Galt scissors. Mayor Payne brought the big giant scissors over for us, and we had the ribbon cutting. Mr. Shelton was there. And then this last Saturday, or week ago Saturday, we had a robotics tournament. Mark Cruz was there, Mayor Payne was there again, and we had, we had 15 schools from around the Northern California region come with their robots, and we had a competition there, and it was, it was quite an exciting day. So we have lots of things going on. What this means for Galt is, with the academy, one of the things that we're going to be having is, students will be, need to be placed in an internship between their juniors and senior year. So right now, we're in our year of planning. Next year, we'll start with our first freshman class in the academy. And so in about two or three years, we're going to be, starting to hit up the businesses and local people in the area and try to get our students placed in, on the job training during the summer between their junior and senior year. And so, and I think this is going to be important for bringing, bringing these kids back into the community, seeing what the job opportunities are for them in this area, as well as getting to see what, what kind of kids we have and how they can contribute to, to what's going on in our community as well. So that's kind of where we are. We've got lots of exciting things going on over at Galt, and, and anytime you want to come over and see the lab, see what's going on, I would encourage you to do so. It's pretty, pretty fun.
Wow, it's exciting, isn't it?
Yes.
Deborah Crane, with this certificate of achievement in honor of your outstanding excellence and contributions to Galt High School and the engineering department, your hard work and dedication to Project Lead the Way is appreciated. Awarded on this 21st day of December 2010 on behalf of the Galt City Council. Thank you. I would just, I would just comment that one of the things that's important to the city of Galt is to show industry and the people out there that we are really educating qualified young people to be part of the future workforce. And so we all win. The schools win, the students win, and the city wins. Thank you so much. Okay, now where are we? Okay, at this point, do you want to read about public comments?
Under Government Code Section 5495-4.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Al Baldwin?
Al Baldwin, I live in the city of Galt, and as many of you know, it's a major community of character. I wanted to come tonight and wish you all a very merry Christmas, because you're not going to have a meeting before Christmas again. So I had to do this. It's just one of those things, it's such nice, just nice watching you all with smiley faces tonight, and I know you're all expecting a lot of positive things to go on in Galt, and I was very happy, on the behalf of the character coalition, to hear Mayor Payne say that you guys have all looked at the pledge and you've agreed with it, and hopefully you've signed it on the character pledge. It's something that's very important. You shouldn't take it lightly. It's a character-building thing that each and every one of you will learn from through time, and appreciate you doing that, too. And I'll tell you what, I thank you, and my family thanks you for being up there, and personally, I have direct communication, and Santa Claus thanks you.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al. Are there any other I want to go for now? Okay. So now we're ready for the consent calendar?
We have a bunch of seconds. Do you want me to read it?
Please, please say.
There are eight items on the consent calendar tonight. Number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 7th, 2010. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, award of design and engineering services contract for Central Galt Corridor rehabilitation and UPRR parking lot improvements. Number four, NCCSIF safety grid. Number five, Second Amendment agreement between the city of Galt and the county of Sacramento for enforcement of regulatory compliance with National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. Number six, Central Galt Interchange Project Execute Agreement with California Highway Patrol for Construction Zone Enhancement Enforcement Program. Number seven, the approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending in October 2010. And number eight, increase of parking fines pursuant to Senate Bill 857.
We've already had a motion and a second, but if we could repeat it, since we were kind of out of...
I move.
Okay, thank you. Mary Lou?
Yeah, my second.
Thank you. Roll call votes?
Vice Mayor Powers? Aye. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. And if I remember correctly, we want to bring item G2 forward. Councilman Shelton?
Yes, what I had was, I brought up at the end of our last meeting, was the committee commission bylaws and guidelines. If you'll just bear with me, I can handle this two ways. One is, my recommendation is that we not appoint any alternates at this time, and if that's not satisfactory, I can explain this later, or we can just go ahead, and I can go through my proposal, council's.
So, Councilman Shelton, you're just asking that we don't appoint an alternate at this time?
Any alternates at this time, because of what's coming up. We had discussed it before when we had a committee. I can go ahead and explain it in detail now, or we can come to it at the time.
I would ask if there's any discussion on that item? No, I respect, uh, Randy Bush's.
You want me to just wait, and we'll go into it in detail? Well, not unless you want the, maybe just elaborate just a little bit for the public to why you want it? Sure, but I mean, I'll, I'll restate it again later. Not long. No, I understand. Just to... That's fine, that's fine. Just correct. Part of my reasoning is that we had developed a, basically a steering committee about two years ago to evaluate all of our planning commissioners, not planning commissioners, but our committees, and evaluate procedures for the council, and we just have an array of, we do have alternates, we don't have alternates. Some were done, the bylaws were done in like 2002, all the way up to like 2009. So what I want to do is reactivate that with appropriate staff and council members, you know, like city manager, the attorney, I would say if the mayor wanted to do it or any council. Obviously, I want to do it, but any council member. We get two people and the city clerk, and we go through these. I think part of that is updating with some of the changes in the rules and regulations. Steve and I had talked some time ago when we started this a couple of years ago.
Any other comments? I would ask the city attorney, will that need to be agendaized for a future meeting? Or what's the... Because it sounds like we're asking to reactivate or, or set up a new committee to review the procedures and policies?
Vice Mayor, this evening, you have the item on the agenda, and if the council wanted to establish an ad hoc committee, you could, you could do it by way of motion this evening. If you felt that there was a need to have more detail as it relates to the membership of that committee, or the structure of that committee, or the direction to that committee, we could certainly take that direction tonight and come back with a formal resolution. So it's really at the council's discretion. If you wanted to just appoint an ad hoc committee by motion this evening, it is certainly within your authority.
So what's our pleasure?
Well, if you're waiting for a motion, I'll make it into a motion, that, that we established the ad hoc committee for, I guess that's a term we probably should use. That ad hoc committee could, should consist of our city attorney, city manager, the city clerk, and two council members. Obviously, I would like to be one of the council members, since I brought it. And it's nothing new, we're just, I call it reactivating the ad hoc committee that we had established a few years ago. And I'll second the motion.
I see the city attorney.
Yeah, just to, just to... Just at the point of clarification, I just wanted to note that the council members, the two members would actually be the committee, and then the manager, myself, and the clerk would provide staffing to that committee, so we wouldn't actually be members of the ad hoc committee.
Sure.
The purpose of the committee, as I understand it, is to review the rules and bylaws of all of the city's boards and commissions, and bring back recommendations for the full body to consider.
Yes.
And councilmember Shelton has volunteered to serve, and we need another volunteer to serve on that.
I'll go ahead and be the second person. You all agree with it?
Is that okay with everybody? Okay. Then I think we're all set.
Let me do a motion, please, to form that ad hoc.
I have a motion, but...
Oh, we have that. I can, I can. And the second, Vice Singleton?
And does this need to be a roll call vote?
Um, you can do it by voice voting.
Okay. Throw all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's passed unanimously. Yep, you're welcome. Okay, now we're ready for appointments?
Excuse me, Mayor. You asked if we had things to pull at the beginning of this. We're, are we going to bring these, let these guys know who's going to be on these committees right now at this point? Because there were a couple I wanted to pull, right, just to, because there wasn't enough applicants, and I like to give it more time for people to turn in their applicants for these, some of these committees. Is it proper for me to pull those now?
Um, I guess my recommendation would be that we read the item into the agenda, so we're, that would move us to item K1, right? And then, and then at that point, it would certainly be appropriate, the mayor wishes to entertain it.
Okay. I'll follow your lead.
The next item... Um, the next item we have is committee commission, committee commission appointment, and we have a long list of committees and commissions at this point.
You want to know which ones I'd like to pull?
Yeah.
Okay. The Commission on Aging, I'd like to pull that one, and...
Do you want to know?
I had it here a second ago here.
Do you want to know the committees that we don't have enough letters?
The Youth Committee was the other one?
Youth Committee?
Uh, let me see here.
I can just give a list of the committees that we don't have enough to fill the appointments?
Please, please.
Would that help?
Yes, that would help me a little bit.
Okay, um, okay, the Commission on Aging, Galt Youth Committee, we did not receive enough letters to fill the vacancies. The Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, there are three positions open, we received one letter of interest. Would you like to pull that one as well?
Yes, please.
Okay, the Housing Advisory and Appeals Board, we have five vacancies, we received one letter.
Yes.
Um, if that was good, that's all I have.
Okay.
What was the one that you only had one, so does the beautiful, the Commission on Aging?
Commission on Aging. I have two letters of interest, and we have three...
Three available, right. That was one of that one I pulled.
Well, I, I was...
The Housing Advisory and Appeals Board, we have one, one out of five.
Okay. I just, can I say something?
Please.
Um, I would like to do my appointment on the Commission on Aging, because I really feel that there are people on here that have served before and have shown a real effort by getting it in first, so when it comes that time, I'd really like to put one person on. There are still two vacancies, only one person applied, correct?
Uh, we have actually two, two, two letters of interest for that committee with three vacancies. And if you, if it, if it helps, maybe we can go through just one at a time, and once we get there.
Yeah.
And, and my recommendation to council at this point is, for the committees that we did not receive enough letters of interest, we, I would like to go back out and advertise, you know, maybe do a big advertisement in paper, an advertisement in the newspaper, and bring it back to council for those committees that we don't have enough letters. But you can fill as many seats as you have letters, if you'd like, at this point. That's up to council.
Well...
In the past, what we have done is if we don't have enough applicants for any committee, we just continue advertising until we do.
Film.
So, I think to move along, if we...
Okay, I've got one more issue. Uh, I'd like to, on the Housing Advisory and Appeals Board, at this point, I'd like to freeze that at this point, because we have, they haven't even convened. Um, and, and we will leave the seats there, but when housing turns around and we have to need to, Mr., don't you have run that, Johnson, you run the committee?
Yeah.
Uh, when, when deemed necessary, then we can, at that point, we can certainly get the letters of intent, and then we can move on with that. Just pleasure.
And isn't that one that we don't have enough applicants on?
Yes.
So, that would be covered under what we've planned to do already, continued advertising for them.
It, it doesn't, because we're, we're going to ask for letters of intent for these, these committees that don't have enough people, but I was wanting to freeze this because right now we don't have any, they haven't even convened. Uh, when we get housing and all, it starts turning around, then we can, as deemed necessary, we'll, we'll get the appointed persons to that, to those seats.
Madam Mayor, if I can make a recommendation in line with the Councilmember Shelton's talking about, on that one in particular, because we haven't had a need to meet, and it's kind of unclear really what that group does, is that we can evaluate that committee as part of this process that Councilmember Shelton has outlined, and so if there's a need to even, you know, disband that committee altogether, we need to, we can evaluate what the need is, the function it serves, and the purpose in the future, and see if we want to continue it, and what form we want to continue it, or if it's something we want to just, um, a change going forward, and something we can evaluate and then bring back to council.
Well, sure.
So, we can freeze it, freeze it now, and then bring it back.
Just freeze it, I wanted, I didn't want necessarily to get rid of it, just have it there, and when we need it, as we deem necessary, then we'll go ahead and appoint the persons to it. So, whatever, you know, your pleasures of council, that would be great, you know, your suggestions.
We'll just, we'll evaluate as part of this ad hoc committee that the, that we've organized and see and bring, bring forward a recommendation to the full council.
That would be very good, I think, yes.
Thank you for that suggestion, and does that satisfy you as well?
Yes, Miss Mayor.
Priority list is being set.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yeah. I'm ready. Um, the first committee, I'm going to make these very brief, so if you want more information, please ask me, but what I'm going to give you tonight is, is going to be very brief. We have three vacancies on the Planning Commission, plus an alternate which we won't fill tonight because of the request from Councilmember Shelton. At this time, I'm looking for the three new council members to make appointments to the Planning Commission.
In any order?
I was going to say, starting with who?
If we could start, I'm going to be down at this hand, and then just work away, if that, if that's okay.
Are we starting with the Planning Commission?
Planning Commission.
Okay. I would like to have Alfredo Rodriguez.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, I would like to have Craig Morris.
Councilmember Cruz?
Robert Dees, please.
Okay. Okay, next we have the Parks and Recreation Commission. At this time, again, we have three vacancies to be made by these three new council members.
And I think we'll start at the other end this time, with Councilmember Cruz.
My choice is going to be Christopher Smith.
Who is that?
Chris Smith.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Brett Steele.
And I'll actually go with Brendan Moore.
Okay. Beautification Committee, three vacancies to be filled by the three new council members.
Vice Mayor?
Lois Tran.
I'll go ahead and last mine, because I didn't. Fatima Lopez, Lopez, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Fatima.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Vicky Johnson.
Um, we're now at the Commission on Aging. We do have three vacancies on that commission, we, on that committee, we have two letters of interest. Um, it's up to council whether they want to fill those two positions, or wait.
I think Vice Mayor had someone already selected?
Yes, Deborah Longoria.
Councilwoman Singleton or Cruz, do you have someone?
I have no one at this time. Neither do I.
So, we'll hold on?
And we'll readvertise for that committee. Um, Public Safety Committee, there are three vacancies to be filled by the new council members, there are four letters of interest before you. Councilwoman Singleton?
Well, Public Safety, uh, Steve Bazanson.
Vice Mayor? I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, what are we doing? Public Safety. Public Safety, Teresa. Did I get the number? Okay, wait a minute. You got four? Okay, I'll go with Mike McCann.
And Lyle Laggie.
I'm sorry?
Lyle Laggie.
And the Youth Committee, um, there are three vacancies on the Youth Committee, we do have one letter of interest.
Um, would the council members want to look at that one, or hold off, and what form other advertising?
Which one was it?
The Youth Committee?
There's only one appointment, there's one.
I think we have one, Janet.
Yeah, I would like to, Steve, get some more letters of interest on that, please, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else want to make an appointment at this time? About here? Okay. Okay, next we have, next...
Excuse me, I, I just flipped past this. I would like to say, were we talking about the committee, the Youth Committee on that? Uh, Janet knows, does a great job, and I intend to, hopefully she's going to be on that committee, and I wasn't looking at my, the right paper, so she's one that I would appoint to that, that position.
Would you like to, like Janet?
She does a wonderful, wonderful job, so.
Okay.
I was thinking it was historic for the preservation.
Um, the next appointments are made by the city council as a body.
Okay, before we move on, I would like to say for those of you that came tonight to see if you were going to be appointed, and the ones who were appointed, we would like to, when all the appointments are made, have you all come back and introduce you to the full council and to the public at that time. So, you'll be recognized, and if you have anything to say, we'll do it at a later date, and you're welcome to stay, or whatever you want to do. Okay, let's move on.
Okay. The next committee is the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. This is one of those committees where we do have three vacancies on the committee with one letter of interest. And this is one that Councilmember Singleton asked to be pulled, please.
Okay, so that was cool. The Historical Preservation, right, cool.
And the next one, the Housing Advisory and Appeals Board, we've covered, I think. Uh, the next committee would be the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District. There is one vacancy on that committee, you'd have one letter of interest before you.
Do you comment? Comment? I think we had one letter from Fred Gaethl, who is currently on that board, and he's asked to be reappointed, but if you want four letters, we can solicit them.
Well, I think it's fine for Fred to be on that board, I wouldn't mind telling him, hey, you go ahead and be on that board, we'll still need to put out the letters of interest for, for the other two.
There's just one.
There's just one vacancy.
Just one vacancy.
We have one seat on that committee.
I'm sorry, I thought there was more. Okay, then I'll, I'll back up Fred on this, I'm sorry.
This is something that the whole council has to agree on?
The whole council has to agree on, and at this point, we'd like to take a motion a second and actually, uh, vote on the...
Is that a motion?
We're rookies, so I'm sorry, we're, we're taking so long. We'll get it down. I'd like to make a motion to have Fred Gaethl be on that committee, please.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Do we need a roll call on this? No, no, okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Okay. Okay, the next appointments are, um, appointments of city council members. Okay. So, the Architecture Review Committee, Mayor Payne currently sits on the committee, we do have, with one vacant seat to be filled by a city council member.
I'll volunteer for that unless someone else wants to do it.
Thank you, Councilman Shelton.
And if we could get a motion on that as well?
Oh, okay. Uh, is there a motion on that?
I move to put Councilmember Shelton on the Architecture Review Board.
And I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? All in favor, it passes unanimously.
Okay, the Galt Middle School Joint Powers Authority, um, this committee actually only meets twice a year. Currently, Councilmember Shelton is a full member, and Mayor Payne is an alternate, so there is one full position vacant.
In addition to Councilman Shelton?
Right, we have two full positions, uh, Councilmember Shelton has a full position, and there's a vacant full position, and you are an alternate.
And I think if you're interested, you're allowed to nominate yourself.
Yes.
So, are there any nominations or motions? This is on the Galt Middle School JPA. We have, uh, Councilman Shelton, but we need another...
I'll volunteer. I'll, I'll nominate myself.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll still nominate you.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. Next is the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Uh, there are two seats on this committee. Councilmember Shelton holds a seat, and we have one vacant seat to be filled.
Um, I was on that for two years, Donahue said, appointed me to that. Um, I would like to stay on that committee, if I could, please, with, with Mr. Shelton saying nominating me.
Is that a motion?
Please, can somebody? Yes, I got a motion.
Okay, moving on. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bloopers, yeah.
Okay, next we have our CAF Committee, which is City and Schools Together.
Bless you.
Um, Councilmember Shelton and Mayor Payne both hold full positions on this committee. At the, at this time, there is a vacant alternate seat to be filled.
Would someone like to?
I'll go ahead and pick that position.
Is that a motion?
I will nominate you. Thank you.
That will second it.
Okay. We have a combination of nominations and seconds, but it's working, so.
It's a bloop.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Vice Mayor? Um, our next seat is for Lasco. This is for an alternate position for the next two years, and there's one vacant position, one open.
Could I nominate me for that?
If not, I will.
Would you please?
I'll nominate Mike for that position.
Look for the blooper reels, okay?
I second it, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You two oldies can jump in and jive and move the seconds.
Um, our next committee is the Sacramento Magi Police and Air Quality Management District. Um, Mayor Payne holds a full position, and there is a vacancy for an alternate position.
I would like to nominate Mary Lou, please.
Is there a second?
What's second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh.
It's unanimously. Okay, uh, next is our Green Print Steering Committee. Um, this committee convenes annually, and there is a vacant position at this time. I'm going to make a jump.
I was going to, I'm not sure. I don't know anyway.
I was going to do that.
I know, that's why I didn't do it.
You were going to.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
We seconded that. Three, man.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay. Comes down to the wire. Sacramento Transportation Authority, Mayor Payne currently holds this position, but has indicated that she would like to step down and get a replacement.
I, I dominate myself.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And last but not least, Sacramento Public Library Authority, um, on this committee, Mayor Payne currently sits on this committee and would also like to step down and ask for a nomination.
You sure watch a lot of meetings. I'd like to nominate Mark Cruz, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I'm allowed to do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. I say, let's say it's a teamwork, that was pretty darn good.
That's, uh...
I think we're done with that, aren't we?
Thank goodness.
I think we're done. And we will be looking for other ways to advertise some of these committees and bring them back to you.
Yes, please.
Okay, we, where are we? Um, we completed the consent calendar, um, scheduled matters, there aren't any, regular calendar, there's not one. Uh, city council, Resolution Number 2007-112, bottled water, Councilmember Shelton.
Yeah, this made a lot of news for some reason, I don't understand what the, what the heck is going on with it, but this is, I want to suggest that we, uh, recommend that all staff and city council go back to using plastic bottled water in our means and during the course of our duties, office duties.
I can appreciate what the resolution, uh, suggested was, was trying to accomplish, but in fact, this resolution caused, uh, use of more plastic, not less. The cups that we used to use, um, were thicker, uh, and, of course, they were shorter, uh, but use more plastic to make these little cups. Uh, as opposed to what bottled, bottled water uses, um, to, to form and make this bottle. Uh, the average bottled water, uh, weighs about thirteen point eight three grams, uh, and that was last, I think, my research was in two thousand, so, uh, as compared to eighteen point nine zero in two thousand. It's a decline of twenty six point seven percent. Most major, uh, manufacturers are introducing lighter weights, uh, bottle, uh, bottles to save money and reduce, uh, environmental footprints. Uh, recycling one ton, uh, one ton of plastic saves seven point four cubic yards of landfill space. Currently, the City Clerk's Office, uh, recycle all bottles, uh, into a recycle bin, we have them in the back of the room here also. And all the money we use to, when we cash those in, go to an Adopt a Family program, uh, which goes to families here in Galt. The current, uh, resolution suggesting also uses, uh, up to about forty minutes of staff time, uh, as opposed to five or ten minutes. Uh, that can be better spent in completing inner office duties, uh, which also helps with, you know, our budget issue, of course. So I move the Council repeal Resolution Number two zero zero seven dash one twelve and adopt the Resolution for us.
Hey, second.
Uh, we have a speaker sheet also on, on that before we vote, shall we? Would you like to hear from that speaker? Al Baldwin?
Bless you.
I'm Al Baldwin, and you've seen me before, and I am a concerned citizen of Galt. When this bottle issue came up with water, I made the statement, and I think I was the only one, that said, "That's ridiculous." And apparently, you guys are coming back and, and bringing it back again, and I, I really appreciate it. What this town needs and this country needs is more jobs. I think we all agree with that. Well, that's what these bottles will give us by being recycled. It'll continue and even get better with the new jobs. And also, uh, you may not think so, but our dependency on oil is decreasing, and these bottles were initiated by another councilperson because of the concern that the dependency on oil in the U.S., and this was one example why they were taken off, because it contributed to it. But actually, we're using less now, so it's time for a change. And I think as time goes on and years go on, we're gonna be using less oil, foreign oil. And if it ever comes to that point, we can use our own oil, we've got tons of it. So, uh, I think it was a good decision, I think it was a bold decision to do this, and I comment, I, I come, I compliment, uh, Mike Singleton for bringing it up, and the rest of you on the council for hopefully going to back him. And, uh, I, I just think it's, it's wonderful that it's being done. So it's gonna create more jobs the more that gets recycled, and that's what I'm after, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Al, just for your information, uh, during my research, um, uh, I discovered that these bottles are made with natural gas. So, you know, I don't know how much of the, no, and as now, I don't know when it started during the old, uh, you know, when the, it was brought up before, it may have been, sure, produced, uh, with, using petroleum. Uh, but the last research I checked on, which was, I think it was in, back in two thousand seven or so, that it's used, uh, used natural gas on the...
I do a lot of research, Mr. Singleton, and when it was brought up before, the statement I thought was correct because it did, did use oil products. And if it's changed, I didn't look into it this time because it's looking good, and, uh, but nevertheless, I, I appreciate you looking into it, that's great, research is wonderful, and we have the internet to check things out, and I do a lot of that to make sure. So I'm concerned, and I'm gonna keep prodding you off and on here and questioning you, and I appreciate your comeback on that, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al. Um, wow, we've learned a lot about bottles.
Bottles, yes.
Is there any other discussion on this before we call for the votes? We've had a first and a second. Let's see, this needs to be a roll call, doesn't it?
Motion stands, right.
To repeal the ordinance. So, City Clerk? Vice Mayor Powers? Uh, yes. Councilmember Singleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Payne? Yes. Uh, the next one, G two, do we need any, we've already done that one, we don't need to go into that again. Uh, G three, i- it's mine, it's about a bus that we purchased, uh, a few years ago. We, at that time, we had intentions to use it. Uh, for the past several years, it's been sitting in the Parks and Rec's courtyard, growing ivy or something. So I would like for the council to, um, uh, consider what we're gonna do with it. Do we want to get cost, or what would take to, um, make it usable? Would we wanna donate it? Uh, what's your thoughts on this? But I think we don't want it to continue to sit in the courtyard.
Right, do you have some ideas on what we could use it for?
I think, my suggestion is, we first need to see what the cost would be to bring it up to standards where it could be used, but that's just my thoughts.
Well, I would agree.
I would agree, too.
Yeah, to, to what it's gonna cost, uh, but you've always got some good ideas, I'm sure you've got something stirring about your mind there to, uh, what we might be able to use for, or if we're gonna be able to use it at all.
Okay, well, let's wait and see if we can do it.
Sure.
Now, do we need a, um, is this just the direction that we're giving our city manager to get the costs on that?
So it'd be a motion to move direct, to direct staff to, uh, evaluate options for the rehabilitation or the alternate use of the bus?
I'll make that motion.
You're just looking for, um, basically a detailed cost estimate of what it would take to repair the bus, not the actual use of the bus.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Do we need a roll call, votes? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It passes. Um, the next one is mine also. Uh, Community Events Committee, and this would be an ad hoc committee that I would like to set up in using the same procedures that we've used on the other committees. Every council member will have the opportunity to appoint someone to sit on that committee. Um, the goal of this is to, um, try to coordinate our activities and events in Galt. We have, um, a lot of activities, and many times, they compete with one another. And if we could, um, maybe with the help of the Galt Herald, they have a website where churches and organizations, the city, the schools, could submit their calendar, hopefully, in advance, uh, then we could better coordinate our events. Especially, I'm concerned about our staff, when we make, uh, last minute decisions, whether we're gonna have a parade, whether we're gonna move the lighting of the tree from one place to the other. I think this would help us become more organized and, um, would work better for everybody. So I would ask if this, uh, council would, uh, agree to such a committee.
Who, could you tell me who you, again, who you think would be the one on the committee?
It would be my hope, and, and it would be up to each council member to, I think, appoint someone, but get, get good representation. Uh, definitely wanna go to the schools and, and try to get their calendar, so someone from the schools, uh, different, um, organizations, service clubs, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, and of course, uh, we would have to have our Director of Parks and Rec's voice, Jeffries, to be a part of it, to coordinate it.
That means you're being volunteered.
Yeah. But I'm really looking after his best interests, so he doesn't have to do all this stuff.
I think that you and I kinda discussed this one time, and I had a different kind of thought on it also. I think it'd be great to have a, a page where, um, you know, there is a real easy program that you can put stuff on, who's having what, when. But a lot of the things that I'm concerned about, which I, uh, would like to have a calendar personally of just stuff that the city's gonna do. I'd like a committee, and I'd like, uh, I, I'd really like a council member or two to be on it just for, you know, just to see all the things that we've got, 'cause we've got the Fourth of July, we've got the Strawberry Festival, we've got the Lighting of the Nights, you know, and the thing that happened with the, um, the parade, the Christmas parade, was, we didn't even hear about it till, and... I know, it wasn't your fault, boys. We didn't hear about it till, you know, two weeks before. Big things that we're gonna plan like that, I think that we ought to be looking at, um, and some of these festivals that we're having, um, and see if, you know, in fact, the city should be paying for some of them, or, you know.
I think this would be one of the, um, um, duties that this committee could look at, is, um, the city events.
Personally, and I, I, I just think, I don't know, I'm, I, I personally would like to have a meeting first before we throw it out to a committee to figure out what the events are that the city's gonna have. The other events, I'm trying to put it on a calendar, but...
Well, isn't this all community events, is what you're...
No, the, for example, the Galt Festival, that's not a, a city event.
Right.
It's not a city-sponsored event, no, it's...
Yeah, it is. We sponsor some of it, don't we?
Is this the nonprofit group that, that puts it on?
I have a comment.
Thanks, Woody.
Okay, Councilmember Shelton, speak up.
Well, earlier tonight, we just formulated a ad hoc committee, and it seems to me, and I'm not trying to drum up more work, but before we get into, you know, putting together more committees, I think maybe that should go to that committee first.
Absolutely, that's, I think that's fine.
I went with concurrent, you're the one that brought it up, so I...
Just can, consider that part of your, your duty, I guess, to look at that.
Duties, right, yeah.
We'll, we'll put that down on the list.
Yeah.
Duties doesn't...
No, we'll add that to the list. I think, will that take care of?
It's due to me.
Yeah.
And it doesn't always suit me.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Um, I, I want it to be kind of a separate thing. I don't, I, I'm not really sure if I want it to be thrown right into being, being a committee immediately.
Well, what this, what this ad hoc committee would do would be, be able to come back and make a recommendation to the council as far as what they think, um, this committee might look like. And so there'll, there's no decision made tonight, other than let this group talk, talk about it, and then something will come back in the future to make a recommendation to the full council about whether we wanna form a committee to, to do this, and how that, what that committee membership looks like.
Okay, but if I have a thought on what I think the committee should be about, I can't talk to those people about it because it would be the Brown Act, correct? But they'll bring it back, and then you can make your comments, and, and I can disagree, agree to agree, or you disagree, or whatever. Okay. Thank you, Councilman Shelton, for that, uh, good suggestion. Okay, Vice Mayor Payne, uh, Powers.
You're your vice.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. Okay, you're next. City Council for Central Guidelines.
Um, this was the, uh, we're gonna make it through this meeting, and...
I don't know.
You guys do have to bear with us a little bit.
Yeah.
Guidelines and procedures and all that, that's in the resolutions and bylaws. It takes a little while to figure out, you know, what you gotta do with each of them, you have to, you know, have a motion, can you just, the attorney just say it's okay, or, you know, whatever, so, um, my...
That's why we all look at Steve when we ask him questions.
It was like, here in the headlight eye, but, um, what I wanted to bring back was, I wanted to, I would like to open a discussion to everyone to change, uh, a couple of years ago, there was a motion to make the mayor's and vice mayor, wasn't it the mayor and vice mayor, just the mayor, position for just a year, and it was never really actually voted on because there was an amendment to, to it, for the next, for when Randy was doing it, for it to be two years, and so I would just like to keep it as two years. I personally think that, uh, you know, you have to go out and represent the city, and it takes a while to go out there and to meet people and, uh, get rapport with other people.
And learn how to conduct a meeting.
Yeah, and learn how to conduct a meeting, and, uh, so I, I think it's, you know, I think it takes more than a year, and I, that's my opinion.
And I would support her on this.
Well, I'm not, and I'm gonna tell you why. I was against it, which Barbara, you know, and it should be two years, but now that we have voted a mayor and a vice mayor on for the one year, we need to run that cycle and see whether it's gonna work. So we go one year, and then we go another year, then you get back on the cycle of when every two years, you get new council members coming on. And that's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No. Okay, then, yes?
Um, Mayor, before you, uh, before you call the question on it, I think there's a couple of options under this one. I mean, currently, it restricts it to one-year terms. The other, another option is to make it a cap of two years, or make it a two-year, uh, term. The other is just to eliminate that language and just say, "The mayor and vice mayor shall serve a one-year term." And if the council desires to reappoint those same individuals or different individuals on a annual basis, you can do it without any limitation. So if you got to the end of two years, and if it was the council's desire, if the majority of the members wanted there to be a third year served by that individual, you would have that at your discretion as well. So, the third option would be just to take the restrict, the restricting language out of your, uh, your guidelines tonight. So I think those are three options that I, I see available for you.
Or does it go to committee?
Well, I'm gonna...
We set up a committee.
You wanna quickly fill out a speaker sheet, is there any problem with that?
No.
Okay.
You can do it after the fact.
Yeah.
Jean Downey, I live in the city of Galt. I, I, at this stage, in the way things are going, you guys are implementing so many things, it seems like it's, it's, it, it, it's, it's... I don't think you're, you're being, I think the public needs more notification on things like this. I think what Steve said should be taken to heart in the last issue, about doing it at least this year and reappointing at the end of that year. And in this year, you can literally get people to come and talk to you about how they feel about it, because I think it's wrong to make these decisions, especially when you guys are newly elected, you're just coming in, you're making these decisions. I think you need to give the citizens ample time to have input on it. Myself, I'm not in favor of it. I'm not to say that I wouldn't change my mind down the road, but I think it's wrong to sit here and say, "This is what we wanna do today, and then we'll fix it later." I think Steve was right on that last issue. If, this council voted unanimously for you, Barbara, and I think they'll do it again. And I just think we need to, we, we need to clarify that, so the public doesn't feel they're getting something pushed down their throats.
Well, that's what hap, excuse me, can I answer? That's what happened when they went, went it to one year, we shoved down their throats in one meeting, and, you know, so, and before that, it was two years for forever.
You know, you can always backtrack if you want, bring up the past, we're talking about today and we're going forward. I'm just talking about today and we're going forward. I'm just saying, I think you need to have, have a little more time for the public to comment on this. I don't think it's right to do, that was, you could say that about the last council, too, about how they implemented things, and how it was brought, how things were brought to the public. I'm saying be a little more open, just open it up a little bit, and Barbara, there's no doubt in my mind, you'll get reappointed a second time. I think you're a popular person.
Oh, thank you.
You're, you're a popular person, and, and I just think what Steve said last time, it, it, it speaks to how this, how, how the city can take this, and how the people can take this. I think in, in benefit, PR-wise, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Al Baldwin, yes? I'll tell you... Jean? Sheet? It worked for two years, for a number of years. And it takes at least two years for other cities and even Secog to, to get familiar with you and your personalities, and what your city's doing, and what you propose, and will you continue proposing it. Two years is, it works, and, and I think it should continue at two years, and then do your reevaluation. One year, and then do it, people on the outside are gonna say, "Well, what happens, she, she or he said they were gonna do this? Are they still gonna do it when that one person leaves?" Well, maybe, maybe not, but it's only one year, and you haven't even got your feet wet yet on some of you. And, and when you elect a new council, a lot of times, you'll put a new person in it, and they've never been a mayor, and they could, they do this. It's gonna take you, even when you're not mayor, a year and a half to two years to get your feet wet. So, two years worked out for many, many years. After two years, you can do your council voting again, and if you wanna reelect them for a one-year term, because they're lea, or they may even leave, they won't even be on the council maybe in two years. It's a new coming in, so it seems to work pretty good. It worked pretty good for fifteen years or so that I've been coming, and it's, it's a matter of you getting familiar with your surroundings. In California, even though our governor's changing, they'll need to know about Galt, and if they know you're leaving in eleven months now, uh, they probably won't give you a second thought, maybe, maybe not. But if they do give it to you, and you go and speak in your tenth month, the question will come up, well, who's gonna be your next mayor? Will they follow through on what you're saying to us now? It, it takes two years just to get yourself indoctrinated into this position, and then you may not even be there totally. There's a lot of classes you're gonna be going... There's a lot of clashes you're gonna be going to. There's ethics. It's just lots of stuff. And one year is not enough, and to redo it for another year, it's just not right. Two years, in my opinion, would be great. I've seen it work in the past. Many of us have seen it work in the past, and I think a minimum of two years. And if the council wants to keep you there and you're still on this thing, fine. But two years. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, Al. Vice Mayor Howard, do you want to restate your motion?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I move that we change it to a two-year... Uh, what do you... A two-year term?
And I will second it.
We have a first and a second?
Oh, discussion.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, returning.
Vice Mayor, if this motion passes, what I'd like to do with the council's indulgences is to bring back actual revised language that would accomplish a fixed two-year term that would actually go into the guidelines, as opposed to trying to draft that this evening as we sit here. So would that be acceptable?
Mm-hmm. Um, Councilman Sheldon, do you still have...
Are we not gonna call for the... We're not gonna call for the vote?
No, we would call for a vote, and then I would bring back language to accomplish that purpose as the motion passes.
Right. Okay, now I'll make my comment. So Barbara, you and Mary Lou were elected as mayor and vice mayor for a one-year term. And now after you... I'm just gonna say it, okay? Now after you're mayor and vice mayor, you're changing it in the middle. This has the same effect on me when the other council wanted to change it halfway, and me being mayor when I was elected for two years. I... Jean Davenport, I agree with you, and I agree with our attorney. Leave it at one year. I have no doubt that it would probably... You guys would both be mayor. Maybe one of you would be mayor and the other one be vice mayor. Maybe the other council members would be. You know what? As you can tell, guys, you can tell by the tone of my voice, it sets wrong with me. Leave it the way it is. We can change it. You'll probably get elected. You may not. But then you're back on the cycle every two years. Well, I've stated my case. I'm a lone duck out here, so you can call for the vote.
Is there any other discussion before I call for the vote? And are we gonna do a roll call? We don't need a roll call? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
No, I'm disappointed in you guys. I didn't think it'd take this long.
No, okay, you know...
No. What I wanna ask them, can I just, for point of clarification, ask what happened with the last mayor? Was it a two-year term, and they wanted to change it to one year, but then it was voted on to keep it as two years?
Yep.
Well...
And I said, "Leave it the way it is." It was already two years, and at the end of the two-year cycle, then you change it to a one year. And that's what they did.
Aye.
It would have been the same if I would have been one year. You know what? I'm beating a dead horse here, ladies and gentlemen.
I think we need to move on.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
I took his chair.
We're now the city attorney's office.
Well, you can't have a ticket either, too.
I have number six.
Introduce an ordinance adopting chapter nine point four-four of the Galt Municipal Code regarding abusive solicitation.
Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, the ordinance before you would regulate abusive solicitation. Now, um, the actual act of soliciting is something that's actually protected under the First Amendment. So the city doesn't have the ability to just ban all types of solicitation, things like handing out pamphlets, asking for donations. But what the courts have said is that cities do have, in fact, the ability to regulate and control abusive solicitation. And basically, that is a situation normally characterized by people that are being overly aggressive, that are stepping in your path when you're trying to move about the city streets. Abusive solicitation is also characterized by situations where you might be a captive audience, such as on a bus, or waiting at a bus stop, and also being asked for money in certain situations where you might feel a little bit vulnerable, such as when you're withdrawing money from an ATM. In this city, the particular concern that gave rise to the drafting of this ordinance relates to the Galt market, and folks soliciting money at the entrances of the Galt market. And we've had complaints from customers of the market, vendors of the market, that they felt that folks were getting a little bit too aggressive in asking for money at the gates, that they were blocking the path of customers coming into the market, that if the folks did not provide donations, that they were being verbally accosted. In some cases, they were being followed, so that they felt physically intimidated. While we were putting together an ordinance that addressed that particular type of abusive solicitation, we felt that it might be prudent to also cast a little bit wider net and to come up with some regulations that would prevent abusive solicitation essentially in all places in the city. What the ordinance does is it identifies what is, in fact, abusive solicitation, and it talks about things such as blocking or interfering with the safe or free passage of a person, following people that are solicited from behind or alongside, threatening the person solicited with physical harm by word or gesture. And then it also bans solicitation in some of those sensitive places, such as bus stops, on a public bus, within a vehicle on a public street. And what this is addressing is in some cities, they've had problems where you might be stopped at a traffic light, and somebody would approach your vehicle, start washing your window, ask for solicitations, and there you are at a traffic light. And you're basically a hostage until that, like, changes. And the last part is in public parking lots, except in designated areas, and then within thirty feet of the Galt market, except in designated locations. So if this ordinance is, in fact, adopted by the city council, what the plan would be, would be to designate locations outside of the gates of the Galt market where solicitors could, in fact, locate and ask for donations, but that they would not be in a position where they were blocking path of customers coming into the market, or in a position where they were intimidating them. So that's the ordinance that is proposed for your consideration this evening. And I'd be happy to respond to any questions the council has.
Mr. Rulo, do we not already have misdemeanor laws in effect that discourage that kind of activity?
We don't have a city ordinance that regulates this type of solicitation. I think that under state law, there might be some penal code provisions that the police could use lies for aggressive or threatening behavior. But what this ordinance was designed to do would be to amplify our ability to control that conduct. And I think also the other benefit would be to be clear with those people that want to solicit in the city what kind of conduct is appropriate and what is not appropriate.
Any other discussion or questions?
Yes, Steve, going back to what Councilman Singleton just brought up. If I understand this correctly, it's basically designed for city protection, people's protection, correct?
Um, that is correct.
Okay. In the nature of an infraction, which is how this is written, how do we protect them? Are you writing them a ticket, leaving the person right there where they're at?
Um, that is correct, and there's a couple of options when we put together an ordinance as it relates to enforcement. And most ordinances are written such that they are misdemeanors, or they are misdemeanors or infractions. That's a discretion of the city attorney or the district attorney. And the reason that the... This one was written as an infraction, and I believe this was at the recommendation of the police chief, is oftentimes when we write a misdemeanor citation, it then goes to the... Well, it does not oftentimes. It always goes to the district attorney. And especially under these budgetary times, misdemeanor code violations of city codes are not the district attorney's priorities. And so the concern was that these misdemeanor citations may, in fact, never be prosecuted. And the thought was that writing these as infractions, where there is essentially an instant penalty, might be more effective than calling for a misdemeanor for any violations. Chief, I don't know if there's anything else to add to that, or is that... Do you think adequately clarified the concern that you had?
Now, that addresses the concern. Remember, if we go with this mark as a misdemeanor, then they get a jury trial if they so desire. If you go as an infraction, the officer can testify at traffic court on his own behalf. They don't get a jury trial, and it's just... We thought it would be a more effective strategy to get a prosecution.
So this will be heard in traffic court and not in a muni court?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, Superior Court.
That's correct.
What would we do about the situation with the offender still being on the grounds?
Well, they have a First Amendment right to solicit. It's just whether or not we have the rules as to how close they can solicit and what the rules are.
I understand that, but given this ordinance passes, they've already violated a law that the city's put in place. Therefore, not only have they been issued a citation for the violation of that law, would it not be prudent to include in there that they be escorted off the premises? And advises the six oh two violations.
Again, I'm not sure that's legal under their First Amendment, right.
As far as... I mean, we can certainly find them. If the council wants us to look into whether or not we could then take them into custody and move them off the premises, that's something that I can look at and report back to the council on.
You mean they would be cited and then allowed to stay there even after they were cited? Is that what you're trying to say, Mark?
Yeah, that's exactly what happened.
Yeah, Steve, we need to get our one step further.
I think we have a speaker.
This past week.
Woody, can you state your name? You remember the speaker, Woody.
Yeah, everybody knows me, but I'm Woody. Uh, they went inside this market with the white coats, the same ones as on the outside. This week, they were on the inside. I don't know how you can do that one. They never really bothered people. They were going right up through you.
Does this ordinance address if they're already inside? Is it from so many feet from the gate either direction?
Uh, it would provide that they could... They needed to be within... They could not be within thirty feet of any of the entrances to the market, so...
Either way.
That would, in fact, restrict solicitation inside the market as well. They'd have to be thirty feet outside in designated areas.
Any other questions or discussion on this before we call for the questions? Is there a motion, then?
So I think there's... I think there's a couple of options. You know, I heard one concern, and that's relating to the level... The manner of enforcement, and whether or not it was appropriate to leave the person in place, and whether or not we had any discretion to move them off. So one option would be to continue this matter. Let me do further research into that, bring back some options relating to the remedies, and then the council could decide whether to move forward. If that concern is not felt by a majority of the council, then another option would be to conduct the first reading of this ordinance.
Personally, I would... Myself, I'd like to have you do some more research on it, because I wouldn't want the person just cited, and then him able to stay there. So, "Oh, it's just cited. I'm gonna go ahead and draft these people anyway." My thinking would be saying, be telling the person that you need to leave now, otherwise you'll be cited again for trespassing, or if you come back, you'll be cited for trespass, which is a misdemeanor. So if you... I'm a... I have no... I agree with this. I like this. Because I don't... Nobody likes to be harassed going to the bank teller and flea market. You know, we don't have too many issues with them doing at the stoplights. But I understand your premise and looking at the big picture, so I do understand that. I just don't... I would like to see a way where they could be asked to leave the premises.
I agree. I think we need to know how we're going to enforce it. So with the council consent, I think we will continue it and get more details on it.
Okay, if I could just have that in motion to continue the item to the next break of the meeting, and I will look into that issue and report back.
I motion for continuation on this item.
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pause.
The next item is item seven. Introduce an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter three point two-two of the Galt Municipal Code regarding disposition of surplus property.
Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, the city has a situation arise from time to time where we have surplus property that we need to dispose of. Good example is worn-out police cars, computers that no longer function, things of that nature. And we do, in fact, have an ordinance on the books, but it is a bit old, and it's not very... It doesn't cover all of the situations that we needed to address. And so what's proposed for your consideration this evening is a revised ordinance to deal with surplus property. Basically, what the ordinance before you proposes is that for any property that has a value equal to or below the manager's contracting authority, which is currently twenty thousand dollars, that the manager would have the discretion to deal with the disposal of that property. If the property was valued below five thousand, he could decide what was the fairest method of disposing of that property. Above five thousand, it would require a... Let it go to bid or auction between five and twenty thousand. Above twenty thousand, the property would have to come to the city council for your authorization to dispose of any property valued above twenty thousand dollars. What this ordinance also provides is the ability to donate property to other public agencies. There's been situations in the past where a police car that maybe is worn out in one agency is not... Would not necessarily be worn out in another jurisdiction, so they might donate a vehicle from one agency to the next. Same thing with computers or desks. There's also the flexibility to essentially trade property for services. Sometimes the city needs certain services, and there might be an ability to take surplus property and receive those services in exchange for that property. The last thing that this ordinance addresses is surplus real property. And what this ordinance clarifies is that as it relates to surplus real property, that decision would need to come back to the city council for your direction as it relates to real property. So the only thing delegated to the manager is surplus personal property below twenty thousand dollars. So that's the summary of the ordinance before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mark?
I actually am wishing we accept this as written.
One second. Any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded. Roll call? Roll call on this? Yes, Vice Mayor Powers?
Yes.
Councilmember Singleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Okay, city manager. Appointment of part-time assistant city manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My pleasure to present this report to you this evening. The recommendation is that the council authorize the filling of an assistant city manager on a part-time basis and approve supplemental appropriation in the amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Provide you a little bit of background by way of this, this staff report. Everybody's very familiar, we've been in this severe economic downturn, not only Galt, but obviously the entire, the entire country. As a result of that, we've made a number of, of cuts to the organization as far as frozen positions. We've been fortunate that we haven't had to lay off any individuals, but we have left a number of positions frozen and vacant as positions have become open. Currently, we have fourteen positions in the city, out of a workforce of about a hundred and thirty full-time employees, that represents over ten percent of our workforce that's currently frozen. Every department in the city has been affected by frozen positions, some more so than others. Community development department, for example, has several positions that are, are frozen. Fortunately for that department, the workload has gone down because we're not issuing as many permits and the development activity is down. And so, there, even though it has had an impact on the department, they're largely able to, have been able to adjust to that. One of the departments that has experienced also a significant number of frozen positions in our, is our parks and recreation department. And unlike community development, the workload has not gone down in that department. Two of the positions, the recreation supervisor position and a recreation coordinator position are, are frozen. Those are positions that, that typically handle all of our youth, adult sports, other types of programs. Right now, we have one full-time recreation supervisor position last in the city. In order to compensate and to manage some of the programs, we've shifted over our special, our programs administrator, who also runs the Galt market and our special events, and he's helping out to run a lot, all of our various youth and adult sports activities. In addition, our parks and recreation director has stepped in to try to help to run and manage some of these programs, which is very difficult to do, obviously, for one individual. As a result of that, there've been a lot of functions within the department that have gone unfulfilled and unmet, a lot of demands in the community that just have, simply have not been able to be, be accomplished within that department. I would like to just share with you kind of a brief list of some of the things that I envisioned as priorities in the department that we'd like to be able to accomplish, and have also been expressed as, as priorities in the past for, for the council. Some things I look at for the department that I, where I see a need is to explore opportunities for revenue enhancement or cost control through different public-private partnerships and other means, evaluating our current programs, how effective they are, how well they're meeting the needs in the community, looking for opportunities to enhance certain programs, especially when it comes to youth and teen programs, evaluating departmental, departmental structure, taking a look at part-time, full-time employees and the balance between those two, as well as contract employees, and use of technology to enhance our residents' ability to register for classes and, and reserve rooms and facilities online, to conduct cost of service analysis, figure out what it's costing us to deliver these programs and services, and how much we're recovering as far as those fees go. The other thing I think we really need to focus on is doing more marketing and outreach, letting people know what programs are out there, what's available, so that we can make sure that those programs continue to meet the needs of our community. Those are just a few. I think there's a lot of, as, as most people are aware, parks and recreation is such an important and vital part of any community, that we need to continue to invest and make sure that those programs are maintained at a very high, high level. However, given the current state of staffing, those are unable to be met. In addition, my time is, is very limited. Ever since I was promoted from the assistant city manager to the city manager position, the assistant city manager position has been frozen, something we have not been able to fill because of the funding issues in the city. And so, in order to fill the assistant city manager on a full-time basis costs about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars a year, including all benefits and everything else that goes along with that position, we're not in a position right now to be able to do that. And so, in looking at the needs of the organization, my recommendation is to appoint somebody on a part-time basis that can specifically take a look at the issues and needs in the parks and recreation department, which would relieve some of my responsibilities in that area, so that I could have time to focus on some of the priorities that the council has, which is economic development and some of the things that are going on in, in the community. We've been able to kind of take a look at an individual that has a significant amount of parks and recreation experience, Mr. Barry Life, who's with me as an included in your package for you tonight, former park and recreation for the, park and recreation director for the city of San Carlos, significant number of years and experience in the parks and recreation field, that would really bring a valuable, a wealth of knowledge, connections, background to that, that department, and be able to really be a resource for me and for the city council and for the community. The, the position, as I stated earlier, would be, in order to fund the position on a part-time basis through the fiscal year, the cost would be about sixty-five thousand dollars. It's estimated that he would work approximately thirty hours a week through those six months, depending, we would reevaluate the position during the budget process this spring and see what the needs were, figure out where we want to go moving forward. Like I said, we, there's a lot of needs in, in that department in particular, but overall citywide, that would provide a great benefit and value toward to have somebody to help me in my, my duties in overseeing the various departments in the organization. The funding for the position would come from the city's culture and recreation fund, as the council knows, comes from revenue sources mostly from the Galt market, but also fees and other associated revenues with a lot of our programs in the parks and recreation department. Those, those fees and the revenue from the Galt market must be used for the parks and recreation program, so it's a perfect fit for those funds. Fortunately, we, we had a much better year last year than we anticipated out of the Galt market. We also had some cost savings in the department, so we're able to use some of those additional funds from the savings from last year in order to fund that position this year. And fortunately, this year, the market is continuing to perform well, and we're above our projected revenue estimate of the Galt market for the current year as well, so we expect to have some additional revenue above and beyond what's stated in the report by the end of this fiscal year. We've been able to identify that, that funding source. But certainly, we will revisit that as part of the upcoming budget process and see where we stand on a financial basis. It'd be important to get somebody in here now in order to help us move forward. I believe that concludes my presentation to the city council. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Council members, any questions or discussions? Is there a motion then?
Motion we accept?
I'll second.
Roll call vote? Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. I just want to comment on that. I'm really impressed with the way that we're trying to make the most of our resources. And I appreciate the fact that you're looking at how we can serve the community the, the best with the least amount of money. Thank you for bringing that forward. Police department, measure R oversight committee report, annual report. This is to review and approve.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. As you know, the measure R committee, and I'll introduce the chairman shortly to give the report, is bound by the ordinance to do an annual report, so that's what this is. The report is mandated by the ordinance and is also, as is the audit that was done before the report. So, without too much further ado, the chairman committee is Gene Davenport.
Welcome, Mr. Davenport.
Good evening. As pertains to the measure R oversight committee, before you have a report, about the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten oversight committee met for its regular meeting and reviewed Fund forty-seven measure R fund for the fiscal year two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. The committee was provided year-end documents prepared by the finance department. The finance director presented the budget documents and provided detailed explanation. Questions were then solicited from the committee members and the public, and the presentation indicated that the end of the fiscal year two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, Fund forty-seven had a balance of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. End of year finance documents also indicated that revenues from all sources totaled seven hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and five cents. Expenditures totaled four hundred and four thousand, thirty-five, four hundred and four thousand, thirty-five and fifteen cents, and cash on hand totaled three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents. The documentation showed that there were no transfers of funds into Fund forty-seven from the general fund, nor were there transfers of funds out of Fund forty-seven into the general fund, and confirms compliance with section three point four zero dot one five zero, which states, "No revenues collected pursuant to tax levied hereby may be spent on general fund operating expenses in effect at the time of this ordinance becomes effective. Or projects that are not a part of police services is expenditure plan, revenues collected here under supplement rather than replaced existing city expenditure, police services as reflected in the fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight." Do you have any questions on the financial documents? I, I defer to Inez.
Thank you, Gene. Are there any questions for Gene or Inez or discussions on this report?
We did you.
Oh, good. Hello.
Thanks. Great, thank you. See you next year.
Then we need to have the council approve this.
Motion to approve.
It's, okay. In favors? Aye. Can we?
I'll do a roll call.
You want to do a roll call?
Yeah.
We're shy about it.
Definitely. I cleared my throat enough. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. And thank you, wherever you are, Davenport. Okay, are there any written communications at this time that you want to share? If not, then we'll move on to the redevelopment agency. We'll adjourn to the redevelopment agency.
Word member Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Any public comments?
I have no speaker sheets at this time.
The consent calendar?
We have three items, approval of the minutes of the meeting of December seventh, two thousand and ten, number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants, and number three, acceptance of the treasurer's report for the period ending October two thousand and ten.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Oh, we meant roll call, sorry. Word member Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye. So, we will now adjourn from redevelopment and reconvene to the regular Galt city council city courts report.
I just have one item at this time. Excuse me, our next meeting is January fourth, and due to holidays, employee furloughs, and some nine eighty, nine eighty Friday, we're, we're looking at having one day for staff work on the next agenda, which would be tomorrow, and then staff's gone until January third.
Right, we're off, starting this Thursday, we're off till January third.
And would you have a problem with that?
So, there's really not time to put together an agenda at this time. We actually recommend that council look at canceling the meeting of January fourth.
Any discussion or comments on that? So, do we need a motion?
And there are no agenda items that cannot wait until January eighteenth. There's nothing that's time-sensitive that's going to stretch.
Okay, I was gonna ask. If I make a motion, we, we cancel the meeting until the third week in January.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're.
Passes unanimously.
That's what I have.
But you lost your voice. Comments by staff?
I don't think we have anything this evening.
Really?
Give it away.
Okay, council, comments by city council members? I'll start with Councilman Shelton.
Just to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and say everyone next year, have a great week.
Councilman Cruz?
Sure, put me number two on the spot. Actually, I have nothing other than to wish you Merry Christmas, and just to put mine to ease, every bottle of water sitting up here prior to our repealing of the resolution was privately purchased and placed nearby me itself. Luminate that argument.
Vice Mayor.
I want to thank Parks and Rec very much for their help with the senior dinner, lunch, the senior luncheon. It was a great success. We served over two hundred and twenty-five seniors. It was a great day, I think, for the city of Fall, because every city council member and our city manager showed up to serve our seniors. They all wore cute little hats and great little, uh, wearers. And it was really appreciated by everybody, and everybody did keep saying over and over again how awesome it was that everybody was there, you know? So, it makes a big difference to seniors. They love that stuff. It was a great time by everyone, it was just a really good event, and I see it getting better and better every year, and so I wanted to thank everyone that volunteered and to thank all of you that came out and supported our cause for the seniors. I really do appreciate it. And on a lighter note, I wanted to talk about, if you go down C Street, almost to the end, and you turn right on Emerald Oak, and you go two houses in, there's a house, it's the Smith House. And these people do a beautiful Christmas arrangement with lights every year, and I drive by it every night going home, pass work, and I pull over. You turn it on to a certain radio station, and whatever plays, the lights all go to it, and it is really good. You should take your kids there, you should just go for a night and take fifteen or twenty minutes, just pull over and do it. It is such a fun thing. I mean, it's just, the guy has got better and better every year, and I personally went by last year and thanked him because it was just so neat. But in this town, it's really nice to see somebody that puts an effort out like that, and so if you have a chance, go by there and look at it, because it's really neat, and he, the colors are, you know, great. You go down, all the way down C Street, and you get to Emerald Oak, you know where that little park is there, there's from Offy Park? Okay, you turn right, and it's the second house in. I'm sorry, I don't know the address, but I, I think that all of you should go. Yeah, really. But it's really a fun thing. And on that note, I just want to wish everyone too a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and see you next year.
Thank you. Councilman Singleton?
I'll say it for you, I'll remember my name. Yes, I have a couple things. I want to commend Mr. Halliday and his staff for doing what they did last Sunday in the city. As you know, we had a, the storm really came in and hit us hard. His staff was out there clearing gutters, cleaning drains, providing bags for sandbags and getting sand for us, because I was over there helping people do sandbags. And I thank you for doing that, and having your, your team out there, and please pass it along for me, but I do appreciate them being out there and doing what they did out in that rain and what nasty stuff. Thank you very much. Also, I'd like to, at this time, I want to revisit and change the measure R ordinance to require quarterly reports for the next meeting.
You want to put that on the agenda?
Yes, please.
Anything else?
Have a great holiday. And please be safe.
I, I want to ditto what Councilman Singleton said about the staff this Sunday. An example, I had a citizen call me at home at eight o'clock on Sunday morning saying the place was flooded, that he had called the police department, but he was still worried. So, he called me, thinking I could make, save a magic wand or something. But while he was calling me, he said, "Oh, forget it, the, the city just drove up." That's how quickly they responded. And I was so proud of our city workers and the way they responded and the, the response I got from the citizens, so. And I felt, after talking to our city manager, I felt like we were prepared. We had the sand in place, the workers were there, the dispatcher knew what to do, so it was a good feeling, and thank you all for that.
And let's not forget, as was our city manager, because his phone was buzzing out of his pocket that day, he was out also trying to get a good view of what was going on and see how it could help, so, thank you.
The last thing I wanted to comment on.
Sorry.
This is something I shouldn't say.
That was.
It's okay.
I didn't want to get Jason.
You know, tonight, we appointed quite a few people to the committees and commissions, and, and I want to say that those committees are very, and commissions are very important to the council, and I'm hoping in the future we can get more input from And I'm hoping in the future, we can get more input from, from what you're seeing and doing. And one of the things that I had found out was the general public doesn't always know that you're there or who you are. So, I discussed this with our city manager, and one of the things we want to do, so don't you guys be fine so quickly, we want to put your, make your picture available out there in the lobby or at the Parks and Recs Department, so people will, will know who you are, but also so you can get some recognition, because you are so important to us. So, I think we're going to have a good year. Wish everybody Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year. Thank you. With that, we adjourn at eight minutes from nine.
You're the director.